Chris.
Who do you reckon he is?
Hmm, thank you. Well, welcome to the Norfolk zoning board of appeals Wednesday, July 17th, 2024. In accordance with the provisions from Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notices hereby given that the zoning board of appeals is meeting tonight, Wednesday, July 17th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 124. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, or by remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if the technological problems interrupt the remote connection. Thank you all for attending. Chris is one of our board members and he's here by Zoom.
So we're definitely getting feedback.
Yeah, we're getting a little feedback, Andrew.
What's up?
Chris, I think we're getting feedback from you.
Can you mute yourself?
Oh, okay.
Is that better?
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
It's still there. Hold on a second. So Andrew definitely needs headphones?
Well, it's gonna keep probably listening out of speakers and then it's a little laggy.
Well, if he keeps muted unless he's talking, then it'll be fine. We're gonna leave Chris on mute.
We have a hearing right away.
Yep. You wanna?
Yeah, we did, and okay. So the hearing. Knows hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Law and any and all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in Room 124 at the Norfolk Municipal Building on Wednesday, July 17th, 2024, for the following application. Third ROC Solar at 7:01 PM for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and Norfolk zoning bylaws 310-4 dot 2 and 310-7 dot 6 to install a ground-mounted photovoltaic solar arrays. The system size is 242 dot 535 kilowatts with 416 panels, two inverters, and 208 optimizers. This is a, there is no battery included in this installation. The property is located 360 Main Street, says map 2, block 6, lot 3, in the C3 zoning district.
Thank you. Do we have?
We do, yes.
You're in attendance. Very good.
So if you actually can come up to next to the mic there on the mic.
Either you need a handheld or you can use that one.
Thank you very much, everyone.
State your name and your relationship to the question or the motion.
My name is Timothy O'Leary. I'm the director of construction for Genie Solar Energy, who is the developer for this project. The aforementioned Third Rock Solar is the EPC or contractor who will be pulling the permits and performing the work.
All right, thank you.
So what I can tell you about this project is it is a ground-mounted project. This is fancy. It's a ground-mounted project on the east and, on the east side of the property. If you scroll up, you'll see that there's additional arrays that will be installed to the north of the building. The entire area where this array is going to be installed is on a berm that was created, I believe, when the building was originally constructed, three years ago? Was it three years ago? So that is a raised area. The project is built in two sections. We have a section on the north side that's with those modules facing south, and this area along here, on the, to the east of the building, those modules will be facing west. And that is to accomplish the desired production for the customer using as much space as possible. I'm happy to answer any questions about the, about how this is going to be interconnected, how it's going to be constructed, what the impact will be for the building, things like that. The, I don't actually have the production information, but it will, the system is expected to produce a significant amount of power to offset the building's current usage on a yearly basis.
Just, just the building's usage, or?
So we are, we are going to be connecting on the line side of the service coming into the building, so there is the potential for power to transfer onto ever-source's lines and to go out to the, to the street. But during normal operation, the building will eat up all the power. We are not generating more power than the building can use to sell it back. This is strictly to offset their power, the power usage of the building. As I said, we're connecting on the line side of the ever-source transformer coming in. The ever-source transformer is located just off the street on the southeast side of the property. We'll be connecting there with a disconnect switch and that will, that will accomplish having all, getting all the power connected to the grid. As somebody mentioned, there is no battery system planned, and there's no battery system in the application.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Do you, Mike?
Yeah. And why is it not on the roof of the building?
So that's a very good question, because that's usually how you would see it. The, we asked that question, and the roof, the building was not, it was not designed to have solar on the roof.
Building was just built.
Right. But it wasn't built with, it wasn't built with solar in mind. So the, one of the issues, and I'm not, I will say this right off the top of the bat, I'm not an engineer, but the standing seam roof, the attachment will create an uplift and the, the company that designed, the engineers that designed the building and for this will not certify that to be, to have that additional uplift force.
Okay.
Keep that in mind, Mike, you know, when you're thinking about putting it on the horses, the horse arena.
Or need a bait.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and I, I've heard that before.
We, we, we don't allow it without a permit for a reason.
Correct. I mean, there's a, you're definitely here because it's kind of mandatory that all arrays come through here, right?
Yes, all ground mounted solar requires a special permit.
Well, I, this is Chris, I hope I got rid of the feedback.
Yeah, sounds good.
So what, what, please explain what is causing the uplift?
Wind.
If you put it on the roof?
If you put it on the roof, you, you, the standard method of attaching solar to a roof, particularly a standing seam roof, is with a kind of clip that attaches on the seam. It's a mechanical attachment, and then to that clip, it's called an S4 clip, there's usually a rail system that will go across.
Okay.
And then the modules will be attached to that rail, so it's raised, it is raised up. Even if you were to attach them, the modules, and drill them directly to the, to the seams, there would still be space underneath.
Yeah, I'm just surprised they didn't put enough safety factor in the construction of the roof to allow for that sort of force. I'm surprised.
So just, just need a mic. Dan, you want to answer as the owner of the?
Well, I just want to address the question. Dan Iainuzzi, I'm the property owner at Camper Chemical and the owner of the business itself. This project, when designed specifically the building, you know, this is a prefab building, so you work with prefab Butler buildings and things like that, and with the design of the building, the general contractor that we were with did not bring up the aspect of solar. So we since ceased with that general contractor and hired a new one, only to find out after the fact that if you know you're putting a prefab building up and you know you're putting solar on it, you let them know that, and then it's all designed into the building with the structural aspects of the building and to account for the snow loads and all the things that the panels will bring. So we were just ill-informed and learned after the fact, and that's, that's the reason.
Sorry about that.
I have a question.
Joe?
Yeah, yeah. First, how big is this property in terms of the size?
How many acres?
What is this, five or six acres, perhaps?
It's almost seven.
Almost seven acres altogether.
And has any consideration of what this would look like to any of Butters or to the main road when you pass by it, as far as visibility?
The, the visibility from the road, there will be visibility from the road. It's the, the berm is raised up on the spoils pile, so you will see, if you were to scroll down, you will see some of this, this area over here. There's, the, this is about 14 feet up, I would say, 14, 15 feet, from the surface of the driveway. So if you were passing at a specific angle, you may be able to see the entire, the entire run here and some in the back, but you would have to be looking for it.
And that's actually ground-mounted, it's not like a carport system that we're gonna allow cars to store underneath it?
No, no car.
It's not gonna be a roof structure that could be used as a canopy?
So I could, yeah.
It's gonna be a ground-mounted pile screws?
It's gonna be, so the, the plan, it's a, it's a racking product called Sun Moto.
Yeah.
And Sun Moto is designed to use ground screws, so there'll be a ground screw, and I actually, if you'd like, I have some of the, some of the engineer drawings of the, from the, from the racking manufacturer. Well, they probably are in here.
Yeah.
So the, the height off the ground, it's obviously going to vary from the low side to the high side. It will be high on the high side, particularly over here with, where we're using four modules. It'll be higher than it is over here where we're only using two modules, and a lot of that has to do with the shading between rows and the requirements for erosion control. You can't put them too close, even if you wanted to and didn't care about shading, you can't put them too close together, because that planer surface creates a larger volume of water coming down in one place, which will raid, erode the ground more and create more runoff with the topsoil, so.
Are you proposing any new screening for utility meters in the transformer? I don't care if we can see your panels, but your meter is down closer to the road.
All that way down there?
Yeah. Can we scroll a little down? There's the hill, you're coming around the bend.
Right.
There we go.
So we have, we do have the option to, so this is the, this is the, this is the existing, where's the, this is the transformer. We have the ability to move this kind of catty corner further back behind the transformer, which currently does not have any screening.
So that, that's a big green box already there?
That is, yes.
And you're just doing a line voltage tap on that?
Where, the, the plan is to either do a line voltage tap right into the transformer, if ever-source will allow it, or to add a tap box next to it, and then there would be our, our disconnect switch, our utility lockable disconnect switch that would disable the entire system, maybe, along with a meter, which would be very small.
Would there be any objection to providing some landscaping around the transformer and the meter, something low? I know that it's not very big, but I mean, in terms of, you have a nice site, you have good landscaping, this is kind of more with your aesthetic that rather than having your utility boxes hanging out, it is green, that's nice, but you could screen it a little bit better with landscaping, something that doesn't root a whole lot, since obviously you've got some things going on over there, but if you wouldn't, if that's not objectionable, I don't think a little, that sort of screening as opposed to.
There are some, there are some required utilities setbacks from utility equipment that they, they'll enforce, but we can.
You've got a little bit of room though.
We could definitely.
If we have the room, we can definitely look at that.
Sure.
The great, excuse me, any question? You're not changing the grade on the berm, they're gonna be?
The plan is not to do any, 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 I mean, we may have to kind of smooth some areas out, but it's gonna follow the topography right now.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna like track machine up it. They're gonna change it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't personally have an issue with the idea of seeing solar panels, this does not offend my eyes, but.
I'd be very surprised if you actually see them.
Yeah.
Maybe some in the front here, but the ones in the back, you're not gonna see.
Even if we did, I personally am not offended by progress of just saying just utility.
Have you spoken to the house next door?
Yes, we have a great relationship with Stephen, Nancy, yes.
All right. They're okay with that?
They're perfectly fine with that.
They may not even see it, because I, I know they have a pretty good green buffer down between you, so.
They do.
How close are the panels gonna be to Main Street, the closest panel?
That is, that's an excellent question. The end of the berm, there'll be a couple of feet before, from the, for the end of the modules to the berm, to the end of the berm, so that's probably 25 feet, 30, maybe 30 feet, once you get to the top?
It's probably a good, it's probably 50 feet, because you need a 50-foot setback, you can't build it at 50 foot, so.
It needs to be.
It has to be at least 50 feet.
50 feet.
So from what I can see here, it looks like it's at least 50, if not greater, because you have a 20, that's your 25-foot buffer from what I saw earlier? That, that inner line?
Roll that down, roll that down.
I'm sorry.
Can you roll the screen down?
I was giving her a pointer, I'm not using it.
The other way, I'm sorry. Oh.
Going too fast.
That's 25, so you know that's more.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's set back pretty far.
That's a, that's 100 feet.
I'm gonna show you.
It's off the glare.
If you want to look at.
If you have the ability to do a street view, you would be able to see it. So the, the idea is not to change anything on the existing berm except for adding, I mean, we will have to trench, but we would, we would bring it back to the original grade.
I was always told you made paint. Do you make paint?
We do.
Yeah, they do.
All right, that's what you do.
Make awesome paint.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Thank you.
I, no, I heard that.
Yeah, no, we make paints and various adhesives and things like that.
Okay.
Very nice.
It's, it's a nice project, I just asked a question, kind of what, what Courtney was saying, is I don't have any expertise in this area, so forgive me. Can there be any screening towards the street, just for those berms, for the, for the, you know, on the berm towards the street side, to soften that view a little bit? I don't know the lay of the land that well, so.
There's trees already there, I think there's trees already there.
You can see the utility box right there, and they've got road access to that utility box, and.
He's got all kinds of green there, so just continue some of that shrubbery. There's all kinds of abidahs.
I'm just thinking, just to soften the view from the street.
So I think there's, there's definitely room around the, the interconnection point, which is the utility.
I'm just gonna lose all of them.
Transformer and the disconnect switch and meter, meter that we're going to put. I'm not, to be perfectly frank, I'm not sure there's gonna be enough room on the berm itself to add significant amounts of greenery.
I don't think anybody cares about that, we only care about what you hear.
All right, no, I just wanted to make sure.
Just to be super clear, we don't care about the solar panels, we're only.
Nice project.
Yeah. Yeah, that's just more with, with the aesthetic of the site, maybe, you know.
Understood.
Your picket fence.
I think it's gonna be a lot better looking than the one in front of the prison, so.
Facts, yeah.
Just stating a fact, so. The one in front of the prison's ugly.
Yeah.
Do you know who installed that one, by his way?
Probably the state.
That's probably the state, they probably.
Yeah, that, that one did not, I don't think that, that one is a good comparison, is a, you can see it from the street perfectly well, right?
Oh, the whole thing.
We can't win every beauty pageant.
Is that for court?
I think Mike also asked you, you weren't gonna take any, you weren't gonna take any advantage of putting the solar above the parking lot.
I think it's to offset the electricity that the migrants are using.
No, the, there's, there's no plan to put, to create any type of carport over the parking lot at this point.
I think it, no.
He wants to utilize the hill, it doesn't have.
Can we bring it in for a focus? There's two conversations going on. I can't, I can't follow, I'm sorry, ADHD issues. Chris was asking a question, he's responding to it, you guys are talking, I'm trying to follow both, I'm having a hard time.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I think Mike, Mike suggested maybe utilizing a carport with, you know, with the, with the PV, the solar cells on top, because that, that makes two, two big, big changes. One, it provides shade for the vehicles when they're parked, and it reduces the temperature on the parking lot.
So the, what I could tell you about, I'm a, personally, I'm a huge fan of carports, I think they're fantastic, and I love, I love building them.
I do.
This is not a great site for a carport, because it's, it's, it's long, it has a building on, shading in the west side, it has a hill shading the east side, you would have to make it so tall to accommodate, and you would still, the cost would be, of the steel and the foundations would be significant. I don't think the return on investment would ever pay back. But it's, it.
No, I understand, that, that's perfectly good, good, good answer, yeah.
Do I hear any other questions?
I do have a question.
Sure.
Has this parcel been subdivided? Because online it shows up as like 67 acres.
It has been subdivided, yes. Yeah, Nancy and Steve carved this out, that, that parcel.
I think I have a printout of the ALTA survey in there, if you guys don't have it, I could show it to you, but it's, I think it was with the original variance application or special permit application.
It was.
It's probably the last page.
So where are, where are you in, where's your project in relation to the horse stalls and?
The horse stalls, I believe, they're, that's the property on the east side. So the area, the, there's the two sections of the, of the property.
Yeah, go back to that, sorry.
There's a long, thin.
There's the old mill building and the big barn building, next to the big barn.
So if you keep going up.
Right there.
No horses.
The horses are still right there.
Oh, yeah. They're, they're gonna be, they're gonna be up there.
The track is still there.
Sure.
Everything's still there. This is, the track is still there, everything's still there.
Do they do chariots? What kind of horse people are these?
Yeah, zones, it's commercial district, it's seized.
Yeah, they broke that piece off years ago.
Yeah, right.
It shouldn't be.
Okay, but do they do chariot racing?
No, they used to have them.
They raise, they raise racehorses.
Yeah, they raise trotters.
I was hoping it was gonna be the chariot people.
Yeah.
Sulkeys?
They're out there every day in the chariots, the two-wheeled.
Yeah, like joggers?
Sulkeys, they're out there every day.
That's what a trotter is.
Oh, man. Does Joke know about this? He can come.
Harness racing.
Sweet.
So anyway, that, if you look there, that shows the.
Then they bound you to the plane range.
It's just gonna go on that slope up that side.
So that, that area in the back with the, with the, with the modules, with the arrays facing.
I never thought about where they got their horses.
Are facing south, that is going to, that's, that area is flatter and wider. I mean, it's basically the same height, but, yeah, but it's, it kind of, yeah, exactly.
It's a pencil and it opens up.
So.
You see where it is?
Yep, exactly.
The solar is cool, but now I really want to know more about the horses. It's not what we're here for.
ADHD.
Put on your notes to contact and house on there.
Steve will take you for a ride.
Site, and we could give you a tour of the, the.
I.
Inspection, and we don't care if you're looking at the horses instead of the solar.
I, I mean, that's not necessary. I got another weird ad hoc hobby next to me.
No, I'm good, there were, there were some good answers there, and it sounds like it's a good project for the.
It does sound.
For the paint company and stain company, it's a good project.
Anybody else have any more questions?
No.
And I don't think there's anybody of the public, there's no.
Want to make a motion to?
Close it.
I would close it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I have to announce my need to make the motion?
Yes, you do.
So I have to say, I Josephus.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I Josephus, I'm gonna make a motion that we close the hearing for 360 Main Street for the photovoltaic, ground-mounted photovoltaic solar arrays.
Tim Martin, I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
Chris make F I.
You do need a roll call vote, because Chris is on Zoom.
Josephus, you know, I.
David X.
Sorry.
Tim Martin, aye.
Josephine Cordahi, aye.
Chris?
Chris make F I.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Nice project, good luck.
Looks like it'll be a great project for you.
Thank you.
Hope to help save the environment.
There you go.
All right.
All right.
Now we're into decisions.
We're on to decisions, there's nothing else? Nobody else coming in to talk to us?
Nope, no other guests.
No appointments?
No appointments.
Deliberations? Did everybody get a copy of the deliberations beforehand in the?
Yes. I have.
I did too.
Yeah, I had some comments.
And there are some comments, so we want to.
Yep.
So why don't we?
Why don't we go through?
Right in order, right?
Yep, 68 River Road, got any comments? 68 River Road was the one across from the airport.
Variance.
Yep, there was a variance request.
Yeah.
The bill on a flight plane.
I gave you my, I gave you my comments.
So if you, I'll have a lane pull up on the screen. Actually, you want to walk through your own comments?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make sure we.
Well, this one only had, I believe, one.
Yeah.
Yeah. This one, this was with the criteria.
Yeah.
Number four.
We might have caught it, but let's just see.
Okay.
Number four on the second page?
Yes.
Joe had a comment?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a reference to, it's simply to say the desired relief to grant a variance would allow the applicant to, it's missing a word.
Yeah.
To build.
Okay.
To construct.
To construct or something, a single-family home. So it goes from two to single-family, just needs an action word there.
Yep. Right there on number four, on the, in the bold first sentence.
And also on number four, I don't know why it references other homes along Hanover Street.
That's been corrected.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
If you see in the last, it's River Road.
Correct.
So we, we edited that out.
Good.
That's on your, did you download it?
Going up to number two. Just a question for the, for the board, which, you know, the decision talks about the soils. I don't know if you wanted to add in there anything about the unique shape of the site that was talked about, I think during the hearing. I forget that the assessors' plans show one thing, but the, the shape on the ground was quite different because of the erosion from the river.
Yeah.
The, I don't think that played a part. The, I don't think that played a part in our decision at all, because in reality, he met all the other criteria, like the 50-foot setbacks and everything. The only thing he was really needing was permission, because it was a floodplain. I don't think he would have gained, he was going to be in the floodplain no matter where he was on his lot.
I agree.
So I don't think it really matters.
I don't think shape moved the house.
No, well, to Courtney's point, the, well, this really shouldn't be used as precedent, it certainly will be.
True.
One after the other, so I'm just trying to make it as tight and specific to this particular site, so that we can always distinguish it, that's all.
Yeah.
What's your thought on that, Courtney? You had a.
I'm not sure what to say about the shape related to erosion, related to basically a use variance for a single-family use. I don't, to your point, I don't think it hurts to, you know, to belt and suspenders and say something to the effect that you find the shape unique, contributing to.
Yeah, I know it wasn't a driving force, I just.
No, but I know that.
I'm having trouble connecting the shape to a single, to the use.
It probably affected how the septic system went in.
Well, I mean, I think that was.
Well, the shape of the lot is the reason that they can't.
That was the only place they could actually put the septic.
But then they would be coming into the setback.
Not really a shape issue, it's a location issue.
If the house come any closer, they'd be building into the setback.
To build on.
I can't.
The location, because they're going to.
Yeah, that's why they, just like, that's why they did not pay market rate for it.
So I don't know, I'm just trying to play the shape discussion.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, we could, you could put that in there, I don't know if it, it didn't have any real bearing on the approval or disapproval, so it wasn't a driving force. In my opinion, I like to keep them simple.
That's fine. I don't think it sets up a bad precedence.
I'd much rather.
I don't think it's going to create a precedence.
I don't think so either. And in reality, as a board, we're not held to a precedence. Others in the town coming before us, floodplanes would cite it, but in reality, we don't have to hold to a precedence at all. We're not making a precedence on a finding, so.
That's correct. The, I'll call, quote, "shape" was related to the wetland, how the river impacted the lot, not necessarily the lot itself, because the lot is really a rectangle.
Right.
I mean, it's not, you know what I mean? So you are referencing the hydrolic soil, so I mean, that had more of a play on.
Where they situated the house.
Well, not even situated the house.
Hydrolic soils are the reason they needed the variance to begin with.
Yeah, the.
The other, absent of the hydrolic soil, it wouldn't be a floodplain.
Wouldn't be in a floodplain.
Were it not in a floodplain, it would be a buildable zone.
Correct. I think it's going to leave it the way it is. The hydrolic soil is definitely a driver, because lots of.
I suspect this is a situation where, and I don't think, I personally don't think that the bylaw is super ambiguous, but should there be a desire not to see a parade in these, it would be a play, is to tighten up the bylaw, not to litigate this one.
Correct. So, if all in favor, we can probably get those corrections made, Elaine, and we can sign this?
Yep.
Yes.
We don't have to do anything else, other than sign it, right?
Yeah.
We don't have.
I'll have you voted as.
Yeah.
You need to vote it.
We didn't vote it? Okay.
Somebody want to make. First, we voted to grant the.
Right.
Yeah.
The other night.
You want to vote to accept the decision?
Vote to accept the decision. As written.
As written. Okay.
All right, so I Joseph Sebastian, I'll make a motion that we accept the decision as written for the 68 River Road.
Tim Martin, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Joseph Sebastian, aye.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Josephine Khodari, aye.
Chris Maykew, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next one on the agenda would be 30 Birch Road, special permit. And I think this one did get the corrections.
Yeah, a lot of things got fixed up real fast. Yeah, so give yourself a few minutes.
Take a perusal of this one, because it did change a little bit since what we got in the book and our emails.
There's a, yeah, there's some edification to that, so if you just want to review your hard copy. A question about, we know it's, the special permit is for the, or at least the one that we're denying them for is for the accessory building, right? Accessory building is the two-car garage, right?
Correct.
Right, yeah, because suddenly in number five on the facts, we just say, there's a four-foot separation from the two-car garage to the existing house. I guess, is it clear enough that that's the accessory building we're talking about? That's a garage?
Yeah, you could say accessory.
Because we suddenly go to. Yeah, let me. At least we say, well, number four does call up the two-car garage. Yeah, poses a.
It does talk about the garage in the very beginning, so to use garage versus accessory building, it's fine. Number three uses a two-car garage.
Okay, then I didn't follow this clearing. From 30 Birch. Yeah, okay, so I take that back.
That's fine. We like you.
I remember that this is, the applicant was having the home closer to the street, correct?
Yeah, they're building a whole garage accessory building in front of the home. The home had the proper setbacks.
Yes.
But the garage was going to be almost completely in the, yeah, more than two thirds, I think, into it, but yeah. It was, and it would have been a flat roof with a deck on it. It just didn't fit with the neighborhood, I don't believe. I think the butters all.
That's not the.
Agreed. I thought everything looked good.
Yeah, this version she gave me before the meeting looks good.
Yep. All right, you want to make a motion to accept?
Yeah, and again, we had already voted to deny this, right?
Correct, you just accepting.
Right, okay, yeah, okay. So I Joseph Sebastian, I'll make a motion that we accept the decision as written for 30 Birch Road, denying the applicant's special permit request for a right accessory building.
Tim Martin, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chris Maykew, aye.
Joseph Sebastian, aye.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Josephine Khodari, aye.
So, so you're not voting on this one, because you weren't at.
She can, yeah, she's really not.
But Mike is voting. Just to clarify.
I was at the initial hearing, but yes, sure.
Mike Brogan, aye.
Very good, thank you. All right, on to the next one, we've got nine and 11 Thomas Man Circle Appeal. This was the appeal from Patrick Carrigan to.
The building permits.
The building permits, and a cease and desist, I believe, there were two parts.
Correct. Yep. He gave it a good look through, knowing that, you know, obviously this will be important for how we're documenting this.
And I can't say dittily about it, so you guys.
I know. We did run it by council. Why is there, going through the, hold on a second.
I think we seem to include everything that was real, some of the big issues, and why we make this decision that we're not going to, you know, stop these two buildings, so. I think it was pretty clear.
All we're doing here is deny the appeal, that's what we have to do.
Absolutely, and it also states, it wasn't, it's not the right, this was not brought up to the right committee.
Right.
Basically, yeah. I think we caught everything that we talked about at the last meeting.
This would seem like to me when I read it. Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have comments to how it's written?
I think it's well drafted.
All right, I'll make a motion, Joseph Sebastian makes a motion to accept the decision as written for nine and 11 Thomas Man Circle, denying the applicant's appeal of a building commissioner's decision.
Did you hear her second?
Somebody else want to second it?
Chris?
Chris Maykew, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
All vote. Joseph Sebastian, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Mike Brogan, aye.
Chris Maykew, aye.
Thank you, very good.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't know whether you visited that site, but it, you know, I can understand why the homeowner was concerned, but it is what it is, and there's only two houses to build.
Well, sometimes your remedy is private.
Right, yeah, and he wasn't here at the time all this was being approved. He's the homeowner of Postall, the approvals for this comprehensive permit.
Well, the issue sounded more of a private civil matter, not necessarily a government matter. Not that I'm not sympathetic, it's just that we're not the court of competent jurisdiction, we're the ZPA locally, that's a civil issue.
Like Chris said, though, you can understand, you know, his reach out.
Of course.
Last, and he was, he was right, he was right in one aspect.
We'll move on to the next one, actually.
He was right in the aspect.
I won't deliberate for that.
Last one is five cottage court, cottage court, sorry, special permit.
That one I had a few things identified, right? Yep, let's take a peek at. Again, that's the version I got from Elaine this morning. Sure, yep, so. Well, from, it got around noon time, I guess, I was here like after lunch, about 1:30. So we went back through. Number four caught my attention on the first page.
By right, as a BB.
Yeah, that was too, the, but first on number four, let's see, the word "the" is just hanging out there at the end of the sentence, at the end of the paragraph. Oh, yeah, yep, right after neighbor. See that? Yep. Okay. You said "by right" though, on number four too, though, right, didn't you?
Yeah, the first sentence in bold, it says, "allow BB right use" in the R2.
Right, that was on, that showed up on number four, on, that's on the criteria.
Oh, yes, in the decision, sorry.
Okay. Is that the next one that you hit? No, the next one was number five. We, it kind of just, just to make it correct, Mr. Burkhart was to apply for a special permit, the word "apply" there is duplicated. Yes, yep. Number five? Yes.
Would there be a period after 2023 and between November 14th, 2023, and Mr. Burkhart? That two sentences are one on number five?
Yeah, should be two sentences, yep.
I could read it either way, but I don't pause when I speak, so.
No, I think a period is appropriate. The next one was in the criteria, number two. Number two. We were talking about that last sentence. Oh, yeah. So what makes that correct, Rich? The subject, actually, you used to say "the subject property." I put "property" after "subject," is somewhat on its own, let me see, "subject property" is somewhat on its own, as, something, as it butts. Which abuts US Army Corps? Yeah. So the word comes down, the word "but" comes in? Subject property is somewhat, even I would say somewhat isolated. I would say somewhat isolated, on its own at the end of cottage court, which abuts the US Army Corps of Engineers property, that it's permanently protected from development. So in reality, what we're saying is it's down there all by itself, there's really no butters. Yeah, it just needed to be written. Such, somewhat.
Oh, number four, title five, title five is the number five, not letter V.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, fun fact, I get it wrong all the time, because I want it to be like a title act of, you know, civil rights.
Oh, okay.
But title five is number five.
Before you go to that one, just put, the subject property is somewhat isolated.
Oh, title five is a number three as well.
Oh, yeah, okay, so we'll put a five. Yep, so now the three, change the five, Roman numeral five to numeric five on three.
Three and four.
Three, yeah, three and four. All right, we'll make sure we mental note that for the, for life hereafter.
It gets me all the time.
It will be a test.
There's always somebody who says something, and I'm just like, I know, but my brain won't learn that, I'm sorry.
And number four also had the "by right" had to be corrected. Yep. Yep, the, right after allowed. Yeah, two Bs, got to be by right. Just delete the B and put in a Y. Yeah, that was the last thing I have for it. Okay. And then just, yeah, I think that was fine. So scroll down to who's voting, just as a reminder. All right, so you are on this one, Josephine? So that's the numbers.
Do I hear a motion to accept this decision?
Yeah, Joseph Sebastian, I make a motion to accept the notice, the decision is written for five cottage court, granting the special permit as requested.
Tim Martin, second.
All in favor?
Joseph Sebastian, aye.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Josephine Khodari, aye.
Chris Maykew, aye, sorry.
Go ahead, Chris.
Talked over again. Chris Maykew, aye.
Very good.
How are you today, Chris?
Where are you today, Chris? You're in a hotel closet, I think.
I'm in Nova Scotia.
Nova Scotia, nice.
Any cooler up there?
Yeah, 71 degrees.
That's nice.
The roof's down on the car, and everything's good.
Oh, nice. Well, so that's it for that.
Now we have town planner updates.
Yeah, just a quick update, the planning board's working on the zoning amendments for, we're shifting our formerly Southwood Hospital site, or property, to 111 Denham Street.
Oh, is this a rebranding?
We're rebranding over time.
Oh.
In terms of the development plan for the property, it's, there isn't any residential as part of the development plan. It's, the only residential so-called, if you will, would maybe be assisted living if that was one of the uses, but it's going to be industrial, commercial subdivision with, at the out area of the property that abuts Denham Street, will be more for commercial uses. So the, some of the changes to the, it's all, so that, that district is Southwood Hospital, formerly Southwood Hospital, it's on its own, in terms of a district. Changes to it are adding some uses that are in other districts that presently aren't allowed, so they become no's the yeses. And then there's a few use, new uses that will be added in terms of more industrial, light manufacturing, even some more life sciences, those type of uses for the site. And it will be, really, just one cohesive project. I think, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the, there was a meeting on June 20th, if you get a chance, they had the concept.
Yeah, I didn't see the concept.
Does it have wastewater?
So wastewater is probably, they could do an on-site PAGA's treatment plant, they could, and they're exploring connection to public sewer.
Now, if I remember correctly, that's roughly an 80-acre parcel that abuts.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
Walpole and Foxborough?
Just Walpole.
Just Walpole, okay.
When you say public sewer, where is public sewer available? It would be through.
The prison.
Through Walpole. Through Walpole, yeah. Yeah.
Actually, not through the prison, through Walpole itself.
Yeah. So.
If we could do an agreement for that, that changes the build out from 50 years down to 30.
Yeah, the, they can, you know, they can move forward with onsite plant if they need to. Because the, I mean, the overall sewer, though, is going to be a lot less than what was proposed there before. They're really probably in the 10,000 gallons a day range, something like that, with kind of contemplating. So they could do with their own pastry and plant, but, but the, in terms of. The zoning change would go before town meeting in November. November 12th is this special town meeting. Same time simultaneously, we're working on a developers agreement with the town. One of the steps will be is there's the deed restriction that's on the property. It's Commonwealth of Massachusetts deed restriction, so it'll require legislative approval. We're need to get confirmation whether it requires a local vote. It certainly needs the legislative vote to remove the deed restriction. They're still working on continuing to do the assessment. What they'd like to be able to do is get the zoning in place and then next year in '25, come to permanent projects so they know what, in terms of what the development plan will be, and then continue to work towards the assessment and cleanup of the site. So, but the idea of, if you remember, there was plans way back and more recently, think about it in terms of residential. And they really want, number one, they're shifting away from residential because they, then as a developer, GFI, they do a lot, they do industrial. That's their, that's their bread and butter. They do do brownfield development, they have one they're doing in Worcester. There's another one that they're breaking ground on, and I think it's Wilmington, a brownfield site. And just, you know, overall, the potential stigmatism of what was there in terms of contamination, the. It'd be concerned, maybe it's clean, well, I shouldn't say maybe, it will be clean, but, you know, there's always the perception. For somebody might want to live, so things are lining up to be, which. We do need to, we need additional commercial industrial. In fact, if they do this, I think it adds, doubles what we have, but it's estimated about a million a year in revenue to the town.
If it's occupied.
Yeah, it's occupied, I mean, it's going to obviously take time to build out, but, but it's certainly not a service demand anywhere near what it could have been if it went the previous proposals, so.
So we zoning more like, this is, it's still going to be voted on, correct?
Yeah, it'll be voted on in November.
Approve the new zoning district.
Can we do any other zoning at that meeting, or is it just?
What do you have, you have something in mind?
I think we should tighten up the, the one we just did for our non-conformities and our setbacks, our structures, our accessory structure waivers. I think.
We can, yes. Send me your ideas.
Okay, it's the same idea that it always was, was that we have to put a limitation on it up to 50% of the required setback or something like that. We need to put a parameter on it so that when we deny these special permits, that we've got more basis.
Yeah, so does the size tie into it?
I think it would be better to restrict, to exempt the front yard setback from that regulation. Personally, I think that's the one that, I think that's the one that pisses people off when you waive a front yard setback. And so for the accessory structure, and so either put a better, like, put a hard stop on that, like, no closer than 25 feet or something like that. I personally think that the 50 yard setback is a bit excessive, but that's just me.
That's because we own corner lots.
That is, that is, but.
We did get that freed up a little bit.
Yes, but, so, I mean, I don't have a dedication to 50 yard or 50 foot front yard setbacks, but I do think it would be better to put some limitations on it, whether, you know, for side and rear 50%, or for front, up to 10%, put a percentage on it, I really don't care. X number of feet, but right now, we can have a bonanza up to like three feet from the lot line, which again, not something I have a huge issue with necessarily, but it's harder for us to deny based on the special permit criteria that we have. So when we say it's not consistent with the neighborhood, the court is not necessarily going to view what the neighborhood character is with the same taste and subjectivity as us. So I think that one with a little bit more tightness on it would put everybody in a better position.
I'm definitely, I'm definitely not a fan of, you know, eating up that 50 yard setback too much.
Yeah, well, I think.
Yeah, and so I, so the typical thing to do with that is just to say, you can't waive the front yard setback, or we, we, we are the, this is not a you, it's us, actually. It's a we, we can't waive the front yard setback, that's one thing that we could do. Or we could set criteria for it where, you know, for like mean average alignment, if everybody else in the neighborhood is at 20 feet, then, you know, it would be reasonable to go to 20 feet, but otherwise, not in that case. But I would be happy to take a whack at some drafting and send it forward.
Sure.
But I think that.
Well, to your point, I think it's a good, so a lot of this got born out of the fact that, you know, we, in, you know, we have, the one district's 150 feet, but a lot of the other districts is 200 feet. And there are sheds that are in that 50 foot setback, but yet, you know, it's not like they're plopped in front of their house, the way off on the side, you had a variance over on Campbell Street. The person wanted, you know, wanted to put a shed in their front setback.
Technically, you couldn't have built it anywhere else.
Yeah, you really couldn't build it out.
We could exempt structures 250 square feet or less, like, there's, you know, it's just like, we can make some tweaks to it so that it is just that we have something that's a little bit more prescribed to fall back on.
They have a shed of what size again, by right?
200 square feet.
Well, two.
10 by 20, 200 square feet, right? No permit required.
Right, but then when it comes to putting it too far in front of the house, it falls into this special permit thing.
Well, no, no, no.
No, on a, on a shed like that.
You can put that anywhere you want.
Yeah, how close to the front yard could you do that?
Put it on the curb.
It's going to depend on your community and how you define structure as to whether or not it's.
I used to.
As to whether or not it's subject to zoning. Because what he's saying is it's not, that's true, that it's not subject to.
10 by 20 is heavy driveway, just for the curb.
It's not, there's a distinction between building code and zoning code on this, and what he is saying, 10 by 20 is exempt from building code. This creates a gray area situation because while it technically does not require a building permit, you can run afoul because it is considered a structure under zoning. And so if you place it in the setbacks in spite of the fact that it didn't need a building permit to begin with, you can still have a zoning violation that runs with your title instead.
And that's where, that's what we ran into on Campbell Street.
Yeah, so.
And another example, you know, the one that you granted for Alice Ave, cornering Alice Ave in Maine, that was a.
Yes.
A deck for above ground pool.
Oh, for Christ's sake. I mean, I feel about structures, if you can kick it, it's a structure, but, you know, this depends on your building commissioner, I'm not your building commissioner, but he's not going to feel the same way about it, but it really comes down to how they're defined in each bylaw, and I don't think we really want to be in the pool deck business.
No.
Because we could probably exempt decks, too.
And so, so we had.
Oh, I guess after, I guess after the, the most recent deck, that would be a bad thing to do.
Right, right.
But decks you could treat as projections, which usually have like, you know, like, the way that you exempt, like bay windows and things like that, where you allow them to encroach a little further into a setback than the standard wall, we don't do that here, but you could consider it.
Yeah, we don't. Well, I'll tell you, I'll give you.
Sometimes dormers are projections.
So people have temporary huts to put their cars under, well, guess what? The structure. And they're in the, they fall into the zoning, so that, I mean, this, if we go down this kind of where we came from, that's all these things, I'm just, that is another example. Somebody had to move it because they had it in the front yard. And they didn't even know, they had, you know. First of all, they probably didn't know they needed to build a permit for it, number one.
Well, Mike's used to having a 10 by 20 in the front of my curb.
No, 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 you could do it without a building permit, but that doesn't mean you don't have a zoning problem.
It's still a zoning issue.
It doesn't mean that somebody from the building department's not going to come knock on your door and say, you shouldn't put that there, you have a zoning.
But he won't come as a building inspector, he will come as a zoning officer.
Right, but then you have to go and get a special permit.
Yes.
Right, under what we can do now.
But to Corinna's point, this kind of amplifies what, yeah.
Yeah, there, so to, you, we may want to consider, you know, possibly some exemptions for our permitless structures, or we may want to specifically talk about them, and so I don't have a lot of feelings about it. My feelings are more just along the lines of if we. It is going to be hard to defend one way or the other, to say no to, you know, when we, there's no limit on how much you can waive, and there's no criteria around, like, what is appropriate to waive. We have no legs to stand on when we say two feet is too close versus 10 feet versus 22 feet, it's all subjective. And so it's not super defensible right now, I'm a little, and, and so to tighten it up, and also just to, our goal was to be reasonable and make life easier for our homeowners, but we didn't necessarily intend to give away the entire farm, as it were. And so that's kind of my thought on it, and so.
Some days, I don't mind if they came and took it.
I, I mean, I gotta, I gotta be honest with you, Dave, you got a farm in Massachusetts, that's like some high value stuff right there. You got some cute cows.
I do.
You, like, there's a TikToker or 20 out there that's ready to like take the world by storm with what you got going on, but. That notwithstanding.
We have happy chickens, according to some, so.
You know, I bet the eggs are delicious if the chickens are happy, but my, my point is basically that we're in a better position to make decisions if that one's a little tighter. It's the same thing as the, as like the flood plain, where if we, you know, if we really didn't want any buildings there, what does, you know, what is this list of, like, this contemplation of why a building might be there? Now and again, it's just, you know, proof of the pudding is in the eating, I'm not sure what will happen with the case that we just saw on this, but my takeaway from it was just that this is a little shaky to work with. That we can keep it easy for the homeowners, but also, you know.
I think, I think if you feel like drafting something up, let us take a look at it so we can present.
Tighten up a little bit.
Yeah, let's go with the.
But tighten it up a little bit, so you have solid ground, a better ground to stand on.
Put it on the keep it simple stupid model.
Yeah, exactly.
The minutes aren't ready, right?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
The, I think it was the eight unit subdivision across from Joffran, is that on hold?
That 40B there?
Yeah.
They're, well, actually, you have a letter for them for next month, but.
Okay.
They're doing their due diligence.
You're updating, so I was just wondering your.
You're a month ahead, but that's all right.
All right.
So they.
We, I drive by it so often, and it's like, what in the world are they doing?
They just threw up a screening fence, right?
Yeah, so there's a. They submitted a letter to extend their permit, they're still working on due diligence in terms of what they're.
Did they buy the parcel next door?
Yeah, yeah, they bought, they bought the, the house that's in tough shape and.
Too bad it wasn't available when they first started the project.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure it was, but someone didn't want to pay.
Oh, maybe, maybe, maybe.
Well, the first develop, you mean, the development that was approved before?
The way they were going to go into that little development, now you got, maybe this property's going to be attached to it now or something, is that what they're doing?
Oh, yeah, it'll be part of it, they also purchased property on Valley Street, on the corner of Valley and Hill Street. They purchased, they have assembled property in that general area.
So it's going to change the whole comprehensive permit?
Yes.
Isn't that the new MBTA zone?
No, actually, some of that, no, it's not, it's outside it.
Just.
Yep, yeah, it's outside, it's not included in that.
Are they going to have additional entrance to this now?
So.
If they own a Valley Street?
There will be a new. New proposal coming to you shortly.
Not enter on me, not enter on 115?
No, those will be entered.
There'll be two places to go in and out.
There'll be probably more than, more than two.
Really?
Yeah, it's gonna be. I think it's a grid sized piece of property now that they.
The development project's going to be significantly different than.
Okay.
You have.
Word on, word on the street.
Rental, please.
Yep.
Yes!
And quite a few.
I'll take it, quite a few will move, you know, for us quite a bit.
Condos.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is.
We can count, so rental, instead of just counting the affordable, we get to count all 100% of them.
We weren't too excited about the way they were jamming everything in there.
I thought it was H.I., so we get credit for all the units.
It was, it was really.
And the ownership development, we can only count the actual ownership units.
I would say.
Like subsidized.
A reasonable estimate would be, you'd probably see something.
So when you take the development instead of an ownership, you get to count.
Hearing for.
Everything, brand new.
So you stopped the old one?
They're just, for right now, they just want to extend it.
Okay.
Just doing their own due diligence.
Like we did with the one up on Main Street.
Yep, with Main Street to protect that permit. Similar to Main Street, I guess, if you will, because they did start construction, but just to be conservative and extend the permit. They're asking to do that for a year, but that's on next month, we already got the update, the one thing, actually, at the moment, that's the only thing on the agenda. But I'm sure something else will pop up, but yeah, it'll be significantly different. And I would.
That's the 21st meeting?
Yeah, 21st. They have, they're before the DEP to work on a wastewater treatment plant, so they need to get that squared up first, so. So stay.
Stay tuned.
You'll have something significant to work on.
Question?
Now, you might have, well, no, yeah, the other one probably, if you remember, the, the project eligibility letter was issued for Cranberry Heights. I would imagine that will probably be coming in September, October.
It'll be fun right now.
They already have their, yeah.
Surprise, they're still moving.
It's gonna be fun, though.
So. That's, well, we just talked about three projects that are ongoing.
Right.
So do, do, do we not have a.
Safe harbor?
A safe harbor for.
We're not a safe harbor, no.
Oh, how come?
Only over there have eight units.
Yeah, I don't care.
No, so they were, the ones that, the units that we had, the, that put us into safe harbor are gone, they're off.
Okay.
Now, because that was only for the year, well, it was up to two years, they're gone now, so now we just add units as we, which doesn't get you back in safe harbor.
You only get safe harbor, you get one year if you get 0.5% of your 10%, and you get two years if you get 1% of your 10%. So for us, it's really not that many, what is it like?
So it's 18 and 36.
Yeah, 18 and 36.
But even the one on Cranberry Heights doesn't have enough to get us to one year.
There's nothing about the Cranberry Heights that's attractive or good for us from the 40B perspective. It is the highest impact version that they could possibly put forward by giving us absolutely nothing that we need. The other one, though, with the rental, sounds good, I'll take that one, that one, though.
So that's.
I mean, but, I mean, I don't know if any of you have looked at our market lately, but we do already have a glut of new built houses in the 800 to 1.2 million dollar range, and they are not moving, so go forth, Cranberry Heights, read your tea leaves.
So that's, you got a two.
I tried.
Two for one update.
I tried, so there you go.
You did it.
I got it. Yeah, I don't have any other thought processes. There was, I don't know if we're supposed, there was a, a gun club or something that was maybe? Or a shooting range or something, maybe down by Provost Liquors?
Yeah, so that was, that was, oh my goodness, I'm trying to think, yeah.
On or off horses?
No, that's off horses, that's an indoor shooting range.
Not as exciting as what you like.
You have no idea, I've been really hot to try to meet you, dude.
So here's the thing, if you like indoors, well, yes, so my understanding.
If you like.
Is that they can't find a lender that would.
You don't say.
But you might, you might know better than me because you're in the, in the banking world, but that will lend for the.
Nobody will underwrite for a shooting range?
Yeah.
Oh, you gotta go to Kentucky if you want that.
That's what I've been told, now.
Get a bank from Kentucky.
So here's the thing, they have sought funding from banks that would fund them, but.
Can't insure it?
No. The cost.
Yeah, they like the price.
The cost to build it up here.
It's fundable, maybe you can get a loan for anything.
Yeah, so the cost to build up in Massachusetts compared to maybe Kentucky or Texas, whatever, is significantly above, and they don't want to.
Yeah, so they won't underwrite it because it won't meet their lending standards for cost of valuation. Kind of funny, that sucks, but it's kind of funny.
They'll just price it higher, and that's the issue.
They need some Bitcoin.
They do, and it's actually, if you look at it, it's, it's a really phenomenal design, I mean.
Do any of them have a life insurance, like?
I don't know.
Benefit plan they can borrow again?
It's next to the brewery, right?
No, well, across from Provost Liquor.
Is there a brewery in Norfolk?
Well, what, they call it, what is it, the beer?
Well, it's actually Eagle Brook.
Yeah.
Eagle Brook doesn't brew.
The basement of the rental place, right?
No, it was a brand new building.
Oh, it's completely brand new.
So, so.
Oh, it was substantial.
But they were going to take that down.
Yes.
It's at that.
Substantial.
Yeah, where the lawn, you know.
Right, where the trailer guy used to be, LG's Trails.
But I mean, it's a, I mean, if you.
It's not far from the police station either, Rich.
Correct. No, no, I know, yeah, no, I mean.
They'd probably be over there using. They'd probably be over there using it.
Yeah.
No, absolutely. I mean, it would be awesome, I mean, the, the design is phenomenal, I mean, it's a beautiful building. They've got a, a club, you know, like a outdoor eat, like a eat, hang out.
Club.
Yeah, it's beautiful, I mean, besides the fact, not that they want to, you know, but it's expensive building, so it'll generate some significant tax revenue, not that they want to pay the bill, but.
I got you.
So.
Well, they'd be happy to pay the bills, that means they're operational.
Well, that's true, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so it's kind of a standstill. I even tried to get people from Medfield, they're doing the development there, to help out here because they're trying to get rid of the state, at the state hospital site, the range.
Yeah.
That's over there.
Yeah, that's an interesting range, yes.
Yeah, so they're trying to get rid of that, so they're, that did materialize, they say, well, hey, this could be a place for the state police, other police, you name it, whatever. Yeah, it's kind of, it's unfortunate, that would have been unbelievable. Maybe it still might happen, still hope.
What if they got rid, like, what if they downgraded their building?
I don't know, I'll have to.
Does it have a commercial kitchen in it to accommodate the club factor?
I'm sure they want to build it like a Topgolf.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Like half, they want to make it like.
Oh, this is, yeah, this.
This is, this is, this is a.
But, but, this is.
It's kind of like a national group that's doing it.
Definitely still to each your own, because I see Topgolf.
So, do some drinking.
From the highway.
Top shot.
Topgolf to me is just like the embodiment of like tacky suburbanist, so like, I would hope that they have a classier building than Topgolf.
No, no.
You know, I haven't been in, the outside of Topgolf is enormous, though.
Why are the nets so high?
Because, have you seen what some of these guys hit?
I know, I know, but it's just, no, no, what they're doing is trying to give people self-esteem with those nets. They are lying with those nets.
Yeah, but you're hitting off the third deck.
But they're lying to people still.
Oh, fifth deck, I haven't been.
There's five.
I go to Trillium to get beer mash for the cows right down the street.
I only drive by and I look at the net, and I am like, they are trying to improve somebody's self-esteem to get them to spend more money. This is the stripper, like, this is the strip club of uses. It's just to part you from your money and make you feel good, but it's all an illusion and a lie.
All I know is you get fed the ball one at a time, it costs a lot.
Well, let's say this.
You do get fed the ball.
Mike's on point in terms of, this is a, this is a.
It's a top-notch.
It's a top-notch indoor gun range experience.
Well, we're, you know, but they're on a pole barn budget, so they might want to think about that.
Stay over at Walpole.
What do you have?
That's a brand-new club over there.
Do you shoot in your pole barn? You have a pole barn, right? Yeah, and you can shoot in there, right? It was fine, right? Right? See, they can do this on a pole barn budget. They can do it on horses.
They want to make it nice.
They do it on horses.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, I usually ask once a year, anything on the moonscape up here in the center? Any, any movement at all on any of that?
Possibility.
Doesn't stop and shop on it?
Uh, no. Eastern Development owns it, they have a land lease.
Moonscape, what's Moonscape?
There are a lot, nothing has it on.
Like across the.
The vacant lot.
The vacant lot across from Walgreens there, or.
I think we might have some movement, so just stay tuned.
Okay.
All right.
Anything on the front grass area?
No, unfortunately not.
Okay. Okay, so, last question. Hugo's building down next to, that thing has been empty.
10 years.
At least 10 years.
10 plus.
Yeah, at least 10 years.
With the drive-up.
So, we potentially have a buyer to buy it, and so, it wasn't ever finished, it's not.
No, because there was, there was a.
It is, it is finished, it is finished.
Uh-oh.
I like that definition of finished.
Finished, it is. It is sheetboxed, it is sprinkled, it is fire-alarmed, it is ready for occupancy. There's been some controversy back and forth, but I believe they're in an agreement now that he can put whatever he wants in the first floor.
Even with a drive-up? Because I think that was a question one time.
Of course he could, because you guys granted him a drive-up.
Yeah, a long time ago, yeah.
Well, it's expired now, but.
And it's been there, it's installed, it's a drive-up.
No, you're, yeah, to Mike's point, the.
The building is going to be occupied because the challenge was to put an elevator in it, but they're not going to occupy the second floor, so the, so the controversy between the building department and him was, had to put an elevator. Well, I guess they don't, so now he's going to occupy the first floor.
Great.
There is, there is, the elevator was, it's not operate.
It's a big expense.
Yeah, but I mean, there isn't all, there's a shafts and everything.
There's a shaft for three floors, it's a three-story building. And I'm telling you, it is plaster, painted, finished, light, everything's done inside that building waiting for a tenant.
I want to say I was in it maybe eight years ago or something, and it was done that.
And he's done that out of his pocket, every single bit of that. So, that's why it's taken so long, and he did a lot of the work himself. The sprinkler got completed this year.
Okay.
It took that long, and the fire department signed off on that. So, he does have inspections, and I'm not aware of the sale thing, but as far as I know, it's going to be tenant.
So, is the hope then to tenant the first floor, get it, buy an elevator with it and finish the rest, or?
No, just get the tenant on the first floor, and if the same use of the tenant on the first floor is on the second floor, then you don't need the elevator, because it's not serving the public's use. They have a common denominator they can meet downstairs. So, it depends on the tenant you get.